A warning that this meeting is being recorded. During tonight's public hearing, attendees are in listen-only mode until such a time that I elevate you to the role of panelist for you to provide testimony. If you have questions during the public hearing, you can submit them online by entering it into the question and answer panel. If you're in full-screen mode, that panel is at the bottom right-hand side of your screen, and you have to click the question mark icon to open it. If you're in split-screen mode, it should already be open. And once open, you can post your questions in that box. The same functionality as for the chat box, and we have staff on hand to monitor both features. If you're calling in, you of course don't have access to those features. But when the time comes to provide testimony, I will call on the first six digits of your phone number, unmute you, and allow you to ask any questions at that time. If you're experiencing technical issues, I'll put this in the chat, but you can call WebEx at 1-866-779-3239, or visit help.webs.com. You'll hear me throughout tonight's hearing as I work to facilitate the functional aspects of this platform. But now I'll turn it over to our Housing Compliance Officer, Leslie Edmund, who will facilitate tonight's hearing. And I'll request Clyde that you share your screen and present the slides. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our hearing on the draft 2022 to 2026 Consolidated Plan and our P22 Action Plan. It's critical that you attend to provide input and feedback on what we're proposing for the next five years on how we use our federal resources. So while they bring up the slide, you'll see the information and the agenda for the night, which I'm going to go over next very shortly. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, here we are. So this is our agenda for tonight. As Richard mentioned, I'm Leslie Edmund. I'm the Housing Compliance Officer here at DHCD. I'm going to then turn it over to Director Donaldson, who's going to welcome you to the hearing and provide introductions. And then we'll go over our overview of the plan. I'll go over a summary of our citizen participation as well as the act. And then the director will open it up to public testimony. And once the public testimony has been concluded, we'll turn it back over. And then we will actually shut down the testimony for the event tonight. Next slide, please. And next, I want to introduce you to our fearless leader, Director Polly Donaldson.
Thank you, Leslie. I appreciate everyone being here tonight and welcome. This is the District of Columbia's hearing on the draft document that's been posted on our website and in the DC Register and distributed by some of our stakeholder groups for which we're very appreciative. For the FY22 to FY26, actually it's FY22 to 26 Consolidated Plan and the FY22 Annual Action Plan, referred to as the CON Plan. These were submitted to HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive your input on the draft that is due to HUD on August 16th. And so this is part of the 30-day public comment period. You can also, of course, submit your comments in writing as well as testifying tonight. And there will be information on that at the end of the slide deck, which we will also share publicly so that you will be able to link to that as well. I want to begin by first giving you a little background on the Consolidated Plan and the process that we took in order to develop the Consolidated Plan. This is done every five years as part of our how we tell the federal government, particularly HUD, how we will spend our federal dollars that we receive directly from the federal government, and also how that relates to our own local investments in affordable housing. So that is the purpose of the Consolidated Plan. It's also designed to help states, and in this case, the local jurisdiction of DC, which is treated as a state by HUD in this case, to assess our affordable housing and community development needs and to also assess what the market conditions are and to make our investment decisions based on geography and based on data. And so that data analysis is what enables us to be able to make the decisions on what to fund and in what areas and parts of the district. Next slide, please. This is a required document by HUD under the site, as you see on the screen, 24 CFR Part 91. We are required to have two public hearings. We had one earlier this year. It was the Needs Assessment Hearing, where we heard from the public and also received written testimony on what the needs were in our community that the hope was our federal dollars would help address. And then also, we need to have a public hearing on the draft document, and that's what tonight's hearing is. The draft document was issued earlier this month, or July, for a 30-day comment period. We will be closing that comment period and then reviewing comments in the preparation of the final document, the final Consolidated Plan that is due to HUD on August 16th, 2021. HUD then will review it for a period of up to 45 days. And it is anticipated that it will be approved in time for the beginning of the fiscal year, which is FY22 as well. Next slide, please. So what are the functions here? Well, it's a planning document, first of all. So there's a lot of, and it's lengthy, quite frankly. It does cover a lot of different federal programs, our HUD programs particularly, but also that are not just implemented by DHCD, but by other stakeholders as well. And one of the important things we realize is that this is one of the ways we use this planning document as a way to set goals, to set performance metrics, and then for later to assess those performance metrics and our tracking requirements. So next slide, please. So what are the components of the Consolidated Plan? Well, there's the Citizen Participation Plan, of which this is a piece of that plan right now, this hearing. There is the overall strategic plan that is developed for the district. We also do conduct a housing market analysis. And each year, we have to produce an annual action plan, each due to HUD in mid-August. And we have the draft Annual Action Plan for FY22 that will be, there will be a presentation on tonight. And then what is due at the end of each year, at the end of the first quarter of the following fiscal year, is a report on the previous fiscal year that's known as the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Reports, known also as the CAPER. Next slide, please. So this is, I hope you can all see this graphic and really get a sense of, you know, what are all the various component parts of the Consolidated Plan? And the fact is, this is really written with you, with people in mind. It's not about just building buildings and building facades and, you know, investing in neighborhoods, but it's also about the people in those neighborhoods. So we are, as DHCD is the lead agency, we also coordinate with two other agencies, the Department of Health for the Housing for People with AIDS program and for the Department of Human Services for the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is used to help provide homeless services. What does HUD want us to do? Well, they are focused at HUD on providing decent housing, maintaining a suitable living environment, and creating broader and greater economic opportunities. And so what we end up doing is through a development of these documents, through a participatory process, through measuring our performance outcomes and doing annual reports, and to be able to accomplish that, we are able to access a significant amount of federal dollars, which Leslie is going to talk about in just a moment. But before we do, of course, I skipped an important, very important piece. These programs would not be implemented without the staff team that is involved in implementing them. And I want to commend Leslie Edmund, who's our Housing Compliance Officer, who oversees many of our federal programs and especially making sure that we adhere to the HUD requirements for implementing those programs. And it's been a remarkable time in the past seven years as we have really strengthened our relationship with HUD, in part very much under the leadership of Leslie. So Leslie, thank you so much. I also want to introduce Richard Livingston, who is here as our Deputy Chief of Staff and Communications Officer and who liaises with the various divisions that are implementing these programs. Kellyanne Morrow is here, I believe, and she is our Grants Management Officer, so handles much of the technical correspondence and relationship with HUD and with the Field Office of HUD. Clyde, and then we have three program analysts who really do the day-to-day operational work of making sure that we are implementing each of the federal programs that we administer and that we are keeping not only in compliance, but also maximizing the opportunities. And those individuals are Clyde Edwards, who's a program analyst, Sabrina Owens, who's also a program analyst, and Jeanette Powell, also a program analyst. And so that's the main team that is working on this. I will welcome also two of our colleagues that I believe are attending from the Department of Health, Baron Bell, and from the Department of Human Services, Aaron Given. All of this, we work together, we collaborate together. But again, what we want to hear tonight is from you, from the people who will be most impacted by these programs and services, and for you to give comments on the draft Consolidated Plan. But for now, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Leslie Edmund, and she will go over the citizen participation process and then review the actual highlights of the plan itself. So Leslie, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Okay, so we're moving on next to our citizen participation summary. Can we have the next slide, please? Okay, so this year is part of our CON Plan process. In order to get feedback from the community, we held a Needs Assessment Hearing in May, as the director mentioned earlier. DC Health also hosted two Needs Assessment Hearings for their population as well. This year, we also did several surveys. We did about five as part of our process using Survey Monkey that launched early in July. And then on July 16th, as the director mentioned, we published the Consolidated Plan. So all of this information and feedback goes into the document that we produced determining what the needs are of the citizen's rate as well as how we're planning to use our funds in the future and what we've done in the past. We also collaborate and talk to other local nonprofit agencies and government agencies to identify needs as part of our actual consultation process, which is required under the rule. All right, next, we're going to go over some of the highlights of the survey that was released. So we're going to first talk about the Economic Development Survey. And the survey was done for citizen participation and feedback and information. It wasn't done for statistical purposes. So as I mentioned earlier, we did five surveys, economic development, housing, public service, broadband, and COVID-19. And I'm going to go over economic development first. Okay, so some of the key highlights for the Economic Development Survey was that over 88% of the respondents believe that they need funding for small businesses, which is, I would say, it's important considering what we're going through in the COVID-19 pandemic. 100%, of course, of those respondents have email addresses since they use Survey Monkey. And 60% of the respondents want more grocery stores in their communities. So we're going to move on next to the housing survey. So here are some of the highlights. 96% of the residents that responded to the survey live in Washington, DC. 70% of the residents that responded also work in DC. And 60% of the respondents live in a home that was built before 1978, while 53% live in a home that has been painted since 1978. And I think those points are important since most of our programs that we fund with CDBG are there to help people get more housing counseling. We fund homebuyer programs as well as financial literacy services. And you see here on the slide, 71% of respondents felt that those were important services. They want more of those. So again, we fund the HPATH program. We fund the Neighborhood-Based Activities Program. We also provide small business assistance through the Neighborhood-Based Activities. Next, we're going to go on to our public service survey highlights. Based upon the responses we received, we see that 27% of the respondents live in Ward Four. We saw that 18% of the respondents live in Ward Eight. And we'd say across all the surveys, we did have a high number of respondents for Ward Eight consistently as well. 13% of respondents live in Ward One. And 95% of the respondents unanimously agreed that community services like public libraries, parks, and recreations are high priorities for them. Additionally, over 50% of respondents want to have better law enforcement or community policing. Okay, next, we're going to move on to broadband. And broadband is a requirement that HUD has put out in the last few years in previous administrations. You didn't see a lot of information or survey questions. As part of the CON Plan Needs Assessment Process, we are required to answer very specific questions in the document per HUD. And one of the sections that we have to reply on or respond to is regarding internet access. So as part of our survey, we wanted to get an idea of how many respondents or persons that use our services have access to the internet or smartphones and tablets. So 85% of those respondents that replied, they own a smartphone and/or a personal computer. Of course, 100% of the respondents have an email address and use the internet because we did use Survey Monkey. And then over 33% of the respondents stated that if they didn't have internet access at home, they would go to the library to utilize those services. So we're learning as a result of this survey that we can continue to use the internet online resources to interact with the public and glean information and get feedback from them as part of our processes. This is the first time we did do a survey as part of our Consolidated Planning Process. Last but not least, we did a survey regarding COVID-19. And we found that of those survey respondents, 33% worked in the district, worked for the district government, sorry. 81% of respondents want to have programs that supply personal protective equipment for first responders. And that 69% of respondents want to have funds expended for medical facilities to treat people with infectious diseases. Last but not least, 63% of respondents want us to fund equipment and supplies to test, diagnose, or treat COVID-19 in the district. So I'm going to move on next and turn it over to Director Donaldson to go over a summary of our federal funding.
Great, thank you. Next slide. We first want to look at what we expended in FY of fiscal year 2020 in terms of federal funding. In 2020, we expended about a little over $100,590,000. And that included for the various programs that you see listed here, the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships, the National Housing Trust Fund, HAPWA, as I mentioned before, the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG. And then there's three additional programs that are new to the district. Obviously, the Recovery Housing Program, which is how, which we'll go into a little more detail in a moment. The CARES Act, which was COVID-19 relief. And then Section 108 program, which is a leveraging program, leverages our Community Development Block Grants and allows us to do that. We served over 104,000 residents of the district with these dollars. That's including all the various nonprofits and families and businesses and other individuals that we help support, including funds that were used to build a community center in Ward Eight, Brentford City, as well as to develop affordable housing, provide housing for people living with HIV/AIDS, and housing for people that are experiencing homelessness. We also use the funds to administer our first-time homebuyer program, known as HPATH, our housing counseling program, our Small Business Technical Assistance Program, and the Neighborhood Small Business Facade Program as well. Next slide, please. So what do we do to receive this year? Here, you will see the impact of the Federal COVID Relief American Rescue Plan dollars. Because this year, we will have $251,965,000. And it is a significant sum, as you can imagine. It includes all the programs that I mentioned before. But then there are some very specific American Rescue Plan dollars that will have significant sums, including to do acquisition and housing for homeless individuals with the home dollars. So let's go to the next slide. So let me talk about what the CARES Act funded. This was in the last spring, so about 18 months ago. And we did report back to HUD on this in March after one year. The program funds actually came to us in the spring. And we use them, we use some existing dollars to fund our tenant-based rent assistance program. And through that, we were able to help immediately with some, right away in early April, with those who are having trouble paying their rent. We also mounted a totally new rent assistance program, the COVID Housing Assistance Program, known as CHAPP. And that was for $6.2 million as well. And that helped a number of units, many more actually than 109, obviously, were helped with that program. And we actually helped thousands, several thousand with rent assistance. And then we have the Small Business Technical Assistance Program, which is our ongoing support for small businesses, 1.5 million for nonprofits that work with small businesses to provide them technical assistance. And then finally, we had the, we did a special program under COVID. We knew that nonprofit organizations were suffering from the effects of COVID, the economic effects, the inability to do their fundraisers, to having to have new expenses to deal with PPE and converting their programs to be accessible virtually. And so we actually dedicated about almost $2 million to help support 45 housing and community development nonprofits with a capacity support grant. And those proved to be very helpful at a time when, as I know as a former nonprofit executive, where you needed to be able to gather as many resources as possible. Next slide, please. We also, in FY22, will be dedicating $38.8 million to the Section 108 program. This is again the leveraging of our Community Development Block Grants, and we can use those funds to help preserve existing multifamily rental units that are for low-income households. So we find this to be a very valuable resource and is supplementing what we also spend locally with our Housing Production Trust Fund. Next slide, please. The American Rescue Plan, right now, we're slated to receive $19.3 million in home dollars. That will be used to help support construction for people, for persons experiencing homelessness. And that includes the acquisition. We are awaiting final guidance from HUD in order to then be able to write what our plan will be to use those dollars for. And so I do plan to, we will be working on that and we'll be offering public stakeholder input on that a little bit later in this calendar year. So now I'm going to turn the presentation back to Leslie to talk about the DC Annual Action Plan. Leslie.
Thank you, Director. So let's move forward with the slides, please. So we're going to go over the first actual fiscal year plan that is in the five-year Consolidated Plan. So every year, from now until the end of that planning period, we will be submitting what's called an Annual Action Plan. And the Annual Action Plan identifies projects that will receive federal entitlement funds. These funds are the Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG, the Home Investments Partnership Program, known as HOME, the National Housing Trust Fund. We refer to it as National Housing Trust Fund here at DHCD, not to be confused with the local funding source, also known as HTF, as well as our Recovery Housing Pilot Program and as well as the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG. And last but not least, housing opportunities for people with AIDS or HIV, otherwise known as HAPWA. So I'm going to go ahead and start talking about the goals for the CON Plan and the Action Plan. And you'll see how the goals align with these funding sources. So for DHCD, we administer CDBG, HOME, HTF, and RHP. RHP is in the process, similar to as the director mentioned earlier, as the American Rescue Plan Fund. So we're waiting on additional feedback from HUD, but we are working on creating a plan to submit it to HUD to use the Recovery Housing Funds as well for persons that have substance abuse issues and need assistance and support in housing. So we are planning to preserve the existing supply of affordable housing, strengthen homeownership tenancy among low-income households, transform abandoned and vacant properties into assets, address bided and substandard property and housing issues, promote energy efficiency and community resilience in order to respond to disasters, strengthen organizational capacity for nonprofits, similar to what we did last year with our COVID-19 nonprofit capacity program, as well, of course, prevent and end homelessness. So we're going to move on next to the goals for DC Health. As I mentioned earlier, DC Health administers the HAPWA program, which has these goals: helping persons live with HIV to live independently without stigma; providing immediate temporary housing assistance to homeless persons living with HIV; expanding housing available to persons living with HIV; assisting persons living with HIV to reach viral suppression and retain care by providing housing as a social determinant of health; preventing single parents living with HIV from losing dependent children; developing housing resources for persons living with HIV, as well as linking persons with HIV to suitable housing. So last but not least, our goal for the Department of Human Services, otherwise known as DHS, which administers the ESG program, is to prevent and end homelessness. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over next the federal funding that we anticipate in 2022 by each funding source. And as I mentioned earlier, we have CDBG, HOME, the National Housing Trust Fund, the Recovery Housing Program, ESG, and HAPWA. So I'm going to go over CDBG activities next. Next slide, please. Okay, so we anticipate receiving almost $5.6 million in CDBG HOME funds, sorry, I said HOME, CDBG funds in order to provide support for affordable housing.
That's $15.6, I believe.
Thank you, Director. Got it reversed. $15.6 million in CDBG funds for affordable housing preservation projects, small business technical assistance, housing counseling services, facade storefront assistance, homeowner purchase assistance, as well as public facilities, infrastructure projects, public service activities such as funding food banks, providing real assistance as well. Next, we're going to move on to HOME. We anticipate receiving about $5.5 million from HUD for the HOME program. We will be using that for new housing construction, rehabilitation of housing, acquisition of property to develop housing. We're also going to use it to fund the HPATH program, otherwise known as the Home Purchase Assistance Program, as well as housing for persons experiencing homelessness. The next source here is the Housing Trust Fund. We receive a little over $3 million a year for the HTF program, which is dedicated to serving persons that are at 30% of AMI. We plan to use that for new construction of affordable housing, rehabilitation of affordable housing, acquisition of land to create affordable housing, as well as build housing for persons experiencing homelessness. Next, we have the Recovery Housing Program. We're anticipating receiving $2.284... We're anticipating receiving $2.284,000 for the Recovery Housing Program. It's a pilot program that is used to provide stable transitional housing for individuals in recovery from a substance abuse disorder. We also anticipate probably getting another allocation in the next year since we are waiting for HUD to give us additional guidance and allocation updates. Next, we're going to talk about ESG. DHS will receive a little over $1 million to fund the Rapid Rehousing Program and Emergency Shelters. And for HOPA, we anticipate receiving a little bit over $11 million. And we're going to fund housing and supportive services, tenant-based rental assistance, permanent housing placement, short-term housing assistance, providing housing information and resource development. So now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Richard Livingston to run the public testimony segment, and he's going to update you and give you the guidelines for this portion of the hearing.
So facilitating this portion of the meeting means elevating individuals to the role of panelist in order to speak. Speakers have five minutes to provide their testimony and will be reminded when they have one minute left. We'll proceed in alphabetical order for those who have registered. And then for those of you who have not indicated prior to this meeting that you'd like to testify, we'll ask that you do so now in the chat. Once we've proceeded through everybody who has joined us electronically, we'll then turn to the callers, of which we have five, to make sure that you all have a chance to, to provide testimony, knowing that you can't indicate so virtually. So at this time, in alphabetical order by first name, we have Robert Warren, who has indicated that he wants to testify. So, Robert, I've elevated you to the role of panelist, and you'll now be able to unmute yourself and speak. You'll have five minutes from the time you begin speaking. Robert, can you hear us? And speak?
I do.
Hi, good evening. The floor is yours.
So should I start?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So thank you again, you know, for this opportunity to testify. Just looking at the overall monies that the federal government is going to be providing to District Columbia, I was hoping that it would be a lot more under the circumstances, specifically to focus in on the public housing and the rebuilding of that infrastructure. Because here in District Columbia, which I have spoken about and testified about a number of times, we have what you call a new communities initiative. And that initiative, a lot of the advocates and residents in the city feel like it's a roadmap to displacement of long-term district residents, and it's also very discriminatory far as the allocation of the housing that's rebuilt on those properties. So we were hoping that, you know, the District of Columbia and the City Council, along with, you know, the rest of these agencies would come together and would actually find a way for us to actually rebuild that public housing infrastructure to make sure that folks in District Columbia are not being economically discriminated against when it comes to their ability to access housing that's affordable, accessible, and sustainable. I think the federal government and the district government has an obligation to see this, to make sure that this is happening. Most of these programs will allow some of that, and some of these monies will help in that light, but it falls way short of the commitment that we need from the federal government, from HUD, as we move forward, especially as we start to have discussion on what is true racial equity and what is really equitable. And it's already been proven that this administration of the current mayor and the governing bodies are falling real short on when it comes to racial equity, when it comes to housing in District Columbia and long-term residents' ability to access housing. And as we move forward, like I said, specifically with the public housing infrastructure, I think Department of Housing and Community Development needs to have a concrete plan in order to move forward. Also, I don't believe that the, I know here in District Columbia, I think it should be well-known through the federal government, we had what you call the comprehensive plan, which the own council's office on racial equity found that plan to be discriminatory. And yet, still, we had the City Federal Council, I believe, here in District Columbia, who moved forward with that plan, along with the City Council. Reason why most of us in the ABC community found that plan to be discriminatory and racist in a lot of forms is because it perpetuated DC being one of the most gentified cities in the nation. And so as we move forward, I would hope that the resources would be made available, that the housing discrimination that a lot of district residents have been living under for many years would no longer be able to occur, and that this city, being a human rights city, the nation's capital, will move forward with, with our local government and Interage Council on Homelessness, Goal 12, the being about universal housing rights and access to housing, especially for those individuals over the age of 55 who actually qualify for it. I think that should be the number-one goal of Department of Housing and Community Development, to make sure that long-term residents are receiving the services, the health services, the housing services, and being able to, you know, end their lives with some dignity here in District Columbia. Thank you for this opportunity to have testified with you guys and just give a little insight on this monies and allocations you're working with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, and thank you for keeping your testimony under the time limit. If I was channeling our Chairman of the City Council, Phil Mendelson, I'd give out a gold star. And those of you who follow council politics will laugh at my nerdy joke. So next, and I've returned you, Mr. Warren, to the role of attendee. Next on our list in alphabetical order, we have Shelia Tyson. So Ms. Tyson, I'm elevating you to the role of panelist. You're now able to unmute yourself and provide testimony. Can you?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Can you? The floor is yours.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Oh, okay. I want to thank DAC first for responding to my inquiry and frustration regarding the State DC program addressing the error message. I was able to complete my online application today. I want to, first of all, address the need of defining affordable housing. It means different things to different people. The word is thrown out as if we all are on the same definition, and we're not. I need to understand what affordable housing means in the District of Columbia, particularly when you're addressing people such as myself. Presently, and I'm addressing the Director, I have since moved from Ward 4 to Ward 5. I'm in Edgewood Commons. There's a plan to build assisted living facility, which is needed, but the residence of the complex was not involved in the planning process. There's great concern here about parking. When you come back here after 8 o'clock, you can't park. There's no parking here. And when you build that living facility, it's going to take away parking. There's underground parking here that nobody utilized because it's not well-lit, it's no security, and as you well know, this is a hot area now with all the violence that's going on. I was in my computer one Sunday evening when the gentleman got killed out here on the parking lot. So there's great concern here about parking. And this is a senior building that I am in, as well as the multifamily units that's also around. And with all the buildings that's being built around us, there's not many recreations around here for young adults. They hang outside. You know, I mean, I'm like, it's going to be crowded in this neighborhood. Where are these people going to spend their recreation at? I don't see that many recreation spouting around in the neighborhood. Tennis should have a walkway to Ro Island Avenue from Edgewood, and right now, there is no walkway. You have to walk all the way around to get to Metro or Ro Island Avenue. I know there's talk about it, but I haven't seen any plans, so I don't really know what's going on with that. New Jersey Avenue, next to the fire station, has become the new tent city. I was really shocked to ride down New Jersey Avenue and see that many people living in a tent, which is a sign that the homeless population obviously has increased. In my 68 years of living in DC and being a native Washingtonian, I have never seen this many tents in this city. So we obviously have a problem with homeless population. I want to move on and talk about Deanwood. My grandparents bought a house on Division Avenue in 1942. My daughter presently lives there. For years, my grandparents looked at dirt, red dirt. There was nothing there. There's a park there, there's still red dirt, but there's no services in that neighborhood. I went to that Safeway, it was horrible. Yet, we've had a mayor who lives in Ward 7. He's been a mayor, he's been, I don't, I don't want to talk about him. I just want to talk about the problems in Ward 7.
Excuse me, Ms. Tyson, you have one minute left.
I'm sorry? Oh, I have one minute left? Oh, okay. Well, then lastly, I just want to say that the last minutes of this present administration in the last 30 has spent a considerable amount of time attracting people to the city. I think it's now the time to focus on residents who stay with the city during its decline, who have been neglected. We need affordable housing at 30% of the median income and not 80%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson, for your testimony and your comments. We want to make sure everyone is also clear that we're here to talk about the draft consolidated plan, and you are free to ask questions by directly contacting the agency at dhcd@dc.gov. Again, that's dhcd@dc.gov, or calling us at 202-442-7200. That's 202-442-7200. And we will follow up on any of, any of your constituent concerns. Thank you. Now I'll hand it back over to Richard.
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Ms. Tyson. I've returned you to the role of attendee. At this time, we have no individuals remaining who've indicated that they'd like to provide testimony. I have put in the chat that if you wish to provide testimony, please indicate so there. And I will do so now verbally to give those hesitant folks an opportunity to indicate so now that I've shared that we have no other individuals wishing to provide testimony. I will give those folks a minute to decide if they'd like to do that before calling on our callers by unmuting them and naming their phone number. So this is me asking one last time for individuals who have joined us virtually to indicate in the chat if they'd like to provide testimony before I proceed to the individuals on the phone. Thank you, Mr. Black, for indicating so in the chat. I will now elevate you to the role of panelist. Reggie, can you hear us and talk? Reggie, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Can, can you hear me good?
There you go. You have, you have the floor.
All righty. A good afternoon, district residents, Department of Housing and Community Development. My name is Reginald Black. I am the Executive Director of the People for Fairness Coalition. People for Fairness Coalition is a grassroots organization that is committed to ending housing instability in the District of Columbia through advocacy, outreach, and peer mentoring. Our goal to, is to provide comments on the consolidated plan for submission to HUD for '22 through '26. There are several points that we will also submit in writing later, but I'm going to highlight a few here. First, let's address disproportionate need. HUD defines this as when there is a greater than 10 percentage point difference between a racial group at an income level who experiences at least one housing problem and the total population in that income category experiencing at least one housing problem. In the District of Columbia, we know that there is a wealth gap of 88 times for whites versus blacks. And we know that this contributes to what we see in terms of homelessness. This year, our point in time count counts 5,111 people, but this number is not reflective of the number we used to plan for our second iteration of Homeward DC, which that annual count for singles was 10,295 households. This gets at the point of our needs to stabilize and, and pull on DCHD's federal resources to strengthen public housing. This public housing, this stock has continually been dwindling, a dwindling stock, and the Housing Authority has failed to replace replacement units through HOPE 6 or the new communities initiatives. And this gets at some points that are directly in the plan as well. And these narrative components could be possibly problematic in reporting to HUD. On page 17, there's a narrative that's misleading because citizens who are in need, it's in the chart there, are not making 56, 70, and I believe it's like 80 or something thousand dollars in income. In particular, residents who are homeless, they don't even make a tenth of this income, even on SSI. The chart on page 45 is also misleading because in 20, because in 2021, the Office of the Chief Financial Officer is now reporting 19,349 vacant units, in which one-third of those units are Class A and are on average over six percentage points vacant. That would mean that the 1,800 persons who are indicated to not have none of the four housing problems are indeed, in fact, people who do have all four housing problems in securing rentals and using monthly and yearly savings to move to homeownership. The discussion on page 48 does not indicate nor acknowledge the disproportionate appearance of African-Americans in the homeless community in which the unaccompanied singles population is 75% male, African-American, and has a median age of 55 with a possible biological age up to 75. We need to provide a, a, a better summary of our activities and how we describe our coordination with the continuum of care, how it relates to Goal 12 in the Strategic Plan to End Homelessness, which talks about providing leadership in the United States in providing housing as a right. The People for Fairness Coalition does support these, these principles that are, I believe, within the Citizen Action Plan. And that's to provide decent housing, establish and maintain a suitable living environment to create economic opportunities and to ensure true affordability. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we will submit these comments in writing.
Thank you, Mr. Black. If I'm handing out gold stars, you get one too. So I appreciate you keeping it to under five minutes and providing that in writing. I will now return you to the role of attendee and revisit my earlier request that if anybody who has joined us electronically wishes to testify that they indicate so in the chat. And having made a few calls now and not seeing them, I'll proceed to our callers on the phone. How this will work is that I will name the first six digits of your phone number, unmute you, and ask if you'd like to provide testimony. So first, we have 202-255. You're unmuted. Would you like to provide testimony?
Matt, it's his turn.
Excellent. I will mute you. And now going on to our next caller, 202-903. You're unmuted. Would you like to provide testimony? One more time for 202-903. You're unmuted. And if you'd like to provide testimony, you can unmute on your side or verbally share that you'd like to do so or not. Hearing none. I will, two more callers. One is 314-712. You are unmuted. One is 314712. You are unmuted. Would you like to provide testimony?
No, thank you.
And then lastly, the caller from 202243. You're unmuted. Would you like to provide testimony? Again, if you're calling from a phone number that starts 202243, I've unmuted you, and you're welcome to indicate to us verbally by unmuting yourself or speaking if you'd like to provide testimony. So hearing none and seeing no more persons in the chat wishing to testify, I will turn the floor over to Leslie Edmund.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your Tuesday night to provide feedback on our consolidated plan, as well as provide public testimony and comments as well. As he mentioned, your written statements and comments may be submitted to DHCD for the record at opm dot questions@dc.gov. You got to put the S on questions. And you have need to send it to us by August 16, 2021. You can also submit verbal testimony by calling the number 202-442-7239. And you're always free to send a letter to the Director, Polly Donaldson, at the address on the screen, 1800 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Southeast, Washington, DC 20020. And meaning that we have no further testimony or comments, we will close the hearing out tonight at 7:26 PM. Thank you so much for attending. Good night.
Thank you all.